Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission. It's January 17th, 2017. We have five of seven Planning Commissioners present. We excuse Commissioners Luther and Hanson for this evening. We have two items on our agenda. First is a consent calendar of minutes from January 3rd, 2017. Commissioner Sokowski.
Motion to approve those minutes.
You may have a second to motion.
I'll second.
Thanks. We have a motion from Commissioner Sokowski and a second from Commissioner Hatch. Any discussion with that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero. Second item, our public hearing, Parkside at Stone Creek, Clay Hollow D, 5415 West 7800 South, Preliminary Site Plan, Preliminary Development Plan, and a Preliminary Subdivision Plat in a PC Zone. Peterson Development, Justin Peterson is the applicant. Is the applicant present? Thank you. The time is yours, and if you could please continue your presentation within 10 minutes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Justin Peterson, 225 South, 200 East in Salt Lake City. I have a lot of history in the Stone Creek Master Plan community. I've worked with staff for years, worked on the project when it was just an assemblage of ground, when I worked with the farmers, the original owners, it was multiple owners. And this is one of the last, not quite the very last, second-to-last residential piece in the planning community. A little history on the project, the city actually approached us when they saw we were doing some assemblage of these different parcels and came to us and proposed, had a proposal, the thesis being a chance to do something on a large scale that would incorporate schools, churches, open space, and sometimes what drives development, in theory, you would get a little higher density than just zoning at Arwin Town. Anyway, we listened, and after everything said and done, zoning worked out to about under three units per acre, about 2.7 units per acre. With hindsight, I think we'd do it all again, we'd do some things maybe differently, staff would probably agree with that, but it's a project I'm proud of personally. Helped build some of the Stone Creek condos, the ranches at Stone Creek, developed the Island Park subdivision, the church and the ballpark, and then the open space that we learned some things through that process, but the walking trails and the quality of life, we're proud of. And this last piece, Parkside, has its own history. We tried over the last, probably eight years, the recession slowed things down, but nevertheless, for the last eight years, we brought in a couple of different times, we've had projects before either your body or city councils, and I guess the mistake we made was that we changed something in the original Stone Creek ordinance, didn't add units necessarily, but maybe we did some adding, subtracting for a net even, again, didn't add units, but for whatever the reasons, it didn't succeed, so we tried on this one to not change anything that way. It's always been dictated to be 106 units of this site, and that's what we're putting in there. We tried to be sensitive to the ranches community to the east, single-family homes, of which I had a lot of involvement in, and so we tried to buffer these townhomes, for sale townhomes, not for rent, but for sale. We tried to buffer with eight single-family lots between them and the ranches, tried to be sensitive. The good news about getting shot down two other times is that we had some community outreach, we had some people there to speak, some concerns, wanted to know what was going in west of them. We had the property owner, I think, to the west, the Boulder Canyon, it was named, I think it's still named that, show up, and tried to listen to some of their concerns. Anyway, this is the result. We brought in an architect that's worked in Daybreak, is where we met him, we've not worked in Daybreak, but he's done a lot out there, and we looked at his portfolio and really liked what we saw, so we let him do some of the design on the buildings, and it's nothing we've seen, certainly in Stone Creek architecture-wise, or really even in West Jordan, I think, at least in the area of West Jordan that I worked in. So feel really strongly about that, and how it'll bring the park space in, the great community. I was looking through the criteria in your staff report, and without exception, as I go through the 12 items or so, I feel this project meets it. It brings communities together, it brings housing types, a mix of housing types, together. It completes, I'd like to point out, the last piece of the puzzle in the miles of walking space, an asphalt path down from Hayden Peak Elementary west towards Boulder Canyon, there at the bottom of the plat, and it completes that missing piece that I have to believe that it is looked forward to by residents out there beyond Stone Creek's borders as well. So, I'm not going to take the full 10 minutes, I did want to give some context and some backdrop, and just let you know that we're committed to this property, we're not just the developers on it, we're going to be building it, and we're committed to making it a great project, and would be happy to answer what questions you have for me.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Well, thank you. We'll reserve some time for you after the public comment process, if you want to address anything that's said by the public.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCandless, you have this.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, just as, again, I think that the applicant has described some histories and backgrounds, as we mentioned in the pre-lead, this has gone through a couple of times before. I think one of the biggest hang-ups, it just seemed to go again and again, was just the amount of park space that was available, and in this, in the concept development plan, there was 2.27 acres that was shown on that, and it seemed like the city council was pretty set on making sure that 2.27 acres was maintained, and this plan does show that amount of park space on both parcel A and B. Just as a note, there will be a community garden up on parcel C, it's up on the upper right-hand side. It was mentioned that there would be, some single-family homes would be located on southeast side of the property that would serve as a buffer for the units. We liked the plan. Initially, we had some issues with guest parking, the applicants had reconfigured the guest parking, put it so it's more centrally located, and I think that the overall, the plan is consistent with the adopted concept plan. So with that, our recommendation would be for approval of the preliminary site development plan and the preliminary subdivision plat for this development. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them also.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCandless or any city staff? All right, thanks very much. Well, this was noticed as a public meeting, so we'll open the public comment section, and if you would like to speak on this item, you're welcome to come up to the podium and state your name and address to the public record, and we'll have the timer set at three minutes, if you could please continue your remarks to that timeframe. We do have one person who's already signed up to speak, Mr. Greg Chapman, 5352 West Ice House Way. Mr. Chapman, are you present? Please, feel free to come up, thank you. You don't have to state your names inside yet.
Okay. Just so the people know, our house is right across the street on Ice House Way and Window Ranch Way, right across from the buffer homes. And the first thing I'd like to address is what I feel is totally inadequate, parking off-street. In the proposal, it talks about the fact that one cannot park on, I think they're called alleyways, inside the development, and this reminds me of the townhouses, which are just north of the ranches. If you go over there to try to visit someone and drop something off, it's very inconvenient because there's no off-street parking to speak of, and very limited. Also, the proposal talks about there being on-street parking, and according to city ordinances, during winter, you're not supposed to park on the streets because of snow removal, and I think that it's short-sighted to not be able to park within the community, but yet it's perfectly fine to park outside on the public streets where it's against city ordinances. And if you ever want to drive down Swiftwater Way, you'll find out that that is, the cars are always parked there, it's almost solid parked, and if you go around the corner on Grizzly, it's the same thing as far as the on-street parking, there's really no respect for the fact you're not supposed to do that. The other concern I have, as far as the buffer homes, at one point in time, we were told they were going to match the architecture in the ranches, which would have made it look like a cohesive neighborhood. Now, with a different architecture, in my opinion, it's a bit garish. You'll have, what, eight homes that are there that don't match the rest of the neighborhood, and that's one of the, one of the things about our neighborhood, and frankly, what attracted me to the neighborhood was, I really liked the fact that we had all these houses that looked cool, they were the same. Finally, my last concern is about traffic. We're extending roads that are going to go over to 5600, and I'm concerned about the increased traffic coming down those streets. I was told that part of the plan was to have those speed bumps, not just the little bumps, but the big things, in here, but as reading through the literature last night from your website, I did not find any reference to those speed bumps, and I think that those big speed bumps should be part of the plan and part of Peterson's cost for developing, and that this should be done upfront and not be like our frisbee golf course that we didn't get. I think this is something that should be done before they start developing, so that we give it, unless my time is up. Any questions for me? Just so you know, I'm the president of our HOA, and representing our group.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sokowski.
Yes. So you would like to see the speed bumps on which road?
Well, Window Ranch Way is one that's going to extend and go along that creek bed, I don't know the name of that, it'll go on over to 5600, and then if you go to the street that's by the buffer homes, let's see, I'm having a hard time reading myself.
Is that Ranch Park?
There's Ice House. Okay, then Ranches Park Road, I think it is, is going to extend up into the development. And that one, that would have traffic coming through, no, is it that one? See, that one, then the next one. I'm not sure if exactly, is those streets over there that are going to have increased traffic on them? Does that help you?
Ranch Park. Or either Ranch Park Place or Ranches Loop Road?
Yes. One of them just goes into the development, I think Ranches Loop Road goes into the development, the other one goes all the way through.
Ranches Loop goes around.
Yeah, Ranches Loop goes around, and Ranches Park goes right through.
Right. So it'd be those two roads, because I can almost guarantee you that going right around Window Ranches Way goes right beside my house, and I look down that creek bed, and I can see it's going to be a real nice little trafficway.
Great, thank you.
Lot of people cutting through.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, Window Ranch.
This is the one that means speed bumps.
I'm sorry, this is the boss. Did you have something you want to say too?
Okay. Great, thank you, Mr. Chapman. Mrs. Chapman, please, feel free to speak.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so speed bumps on Window Ranch is really important, because there's a lot of children.
Could you please explain?
There's a lot of children going from over to Hayden Peak Elementary School, and it's important that the cars not go real fast, because cars will cut through there now, because they can avoid going 56 to 78, so there'll be a lot of non-residential cars going through there. And then my other question is, on the west side of the development, I can see two solid rows of townhouses. If I were to go visit somebody in that, one of those places on the very far west, where's the visitor parking?
Good question. We'll address that. Commissioner Queen.
Because there's no on-street parking, so there's, you know, if I were to go over there and visit somebody, there needs to be a place for people to park.
Did you have something you wanted us to ask?
Yeah.
Okay, is that legitimate? Because people aren't going to want to park there on Window Ranch and walk in there. And when we were reading over the material, it says tandem parking. Now, it wasn't talking about garages, it was tandem parking. Exactly what does that mean?
Thank you. And we'll, as I understand, your staff explained it to me, it's one car in back and another car.
Well, that's in a garage, but you wouldn't have public parking that way, somebody'd get locked in. But it wasn't talking about garages, it was talking, the way we read it, it was talking about available, extra available parking spaces, because I see a lot of them up in the eastern part of that, but I don't see the extra parking spaces on the western part of that, and there's got to be some visitor parking someplace.
Great, we will address that, thank you.
Okay. And, I don't want you to take this personally, but we do live in a Peterson home, we have dealt with Peterson, and they frequently don't do what they say they're going to do, they just lie about it. So, I want to know for sure that that walkway's going through, because right now, the kids coming from, like the boulders and stuff, are walking through the mud and the muck, and it's really, you know, it's a crummy thing for them. Is that walkway going to get through for sure?
We will definitely address that as well.
Okay, because right now, they walk through the mud and the dirt and the weeds, and, but like I said, I don't trust Peterson. When we built our house, we learned to not, that they were not trustworthy, so I don't trust them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment session and bring it back for discussion from the commission, definitely addressing parking, architecture, traffic, or, I'm sorry, we want the applicant to come back up. If you could please address specifically four items, parking, architecture, traffic, and the walkway.
Say that again, parking?
Yeah, let's go one by one. Parking, because of on-street snow removal, visitor parking, could you explain a little bit about?
Yeah, you don't have a pointer, do you, Ray? Is this? Green one?
Yes.
Yeah, the parking, it's interesting, the parking in Stone Creek has gone through some iterations that the city has gone through, even though we got our best thing in 1997, for example, one example of that is, on-street parking is always going to be considered in Stone Creek. Grizzly Way is a perfect example of that, and I don't know, I'm not saying it changes every day, but nevertheless, there have been, you know, cities grow, residents move in, and sometimes that's used as a form of traffic calming, is on-street parking, and I don't claim to be a traffic engineer, but, and this was actually an issue with staff, well, what about on-street parking? And correct me if I'm wrong, Nate and Ray, but I believe we didn't look towards any on-street parking, at least for the residents, we need the two-car garages, where we learned maybe in the Stone Creek condominiums, for example, the one-car garages are not enough, so all these units have two-car garages, and then additionally, there's these parking stalls, now those would be to answer the visitor question, they're not for residents to park there overnight, but I don't know how many bays, but multiple bays for visitor parking that is what we feel is centrally located, for someone to come and visit, you know, I think these were addressed, area of concern, the western units, lines of units. Another, less central, but accommodates more the eastern side, is some of this community garden parking, that we don't anticipate being a part for the garden for long periods of time, so hopefully that addresses some of the parking issues. And then some of the other concerns, if you can help me?
Sure, thank you. Second is architecture. I know we've gone through the design review, maybe process, but can you speak to that, since it was a concern?
Yeah, I can. Architecture, I'll just make the statement that it's a fairly subjective art, more an art than science, and we were in fact talking earlier this week about the Stone Creek condominiums that are up here, that employed an architectural element of coins. Now, you just do not see that architectural element being used much here 20 years later, and taking nothing away from the ranches architecture, that I personally had a hand in, and I think stands on its own, hopefully has some timeless elements to it, but we've not been approached by the ranches HOA, it may add to some confusion if we were to duplicate those, either architecturally or exactly. We thought the nature of the housing would be an all-of-branch, so to speak, of something that would just give them a comfort level, knowing that there is a buffer between them and the for-sale townhomes. So beyond that, I follow back on my comments of the architect, and left it to him to propose something that we feel is very tasteful, and hopefully you would like the Architectural Review Committee finds the same.
Thank you. The next item, traffic, speed bumps.
Well, yeah, thank you. This, this whole, if you can scroll out to the larger scale, Ray, maybe the master plan and the map, there you go, any one of those, that should be fine, but it was always invariably, I mean, this road has always been planned to connect, and hopefully that's been no secret. Now, the good news is, this road is going through as well, as a last piece, or one of the pieces in the loop road that will go all the way around the four corners. We're excited about that prospect, both for commercial and for traffic flow and so forth. I, it's my understanding, Nate, and not to put you on the spot, but I had a talk with our in-house planner, who actually lives out in this community, but she said, are there traffic calming measures planned and required by your engineering staff? This was my understanding, I don't want to misrepresent, and so that's why I defer to you, if I can put you on the spot for a second. Are you aware of those? I know you weren't the designer, the design engineer, excuse me, the project engineer, review engineer on this, but I believe there's some traffic calming measures, where they're slated for, I can't speak to right off the top of my head, but if you think I'm wrong on that, please.
No, we do have a traffic calming program. Just as we were having this conversation, I sent Bill Bernowski, our traffic engineer, an email, just asking him to make sure that he looks at this as we review the final plans. And we do that all the time, we add traffic calming measure, either speed tables or certain geometries to subdivision designs as we lay them out, because it's easier to do it upfront as the project is built, rather than coming back and having the city do it with the city's resources.
And I am under the impression that there are speed tables required in certain locations in this Parkside subdivision. And so that's about as much the extent of my knowledge on the traffic that I can speak to, and I'm probably forgetting one more concern you'd like me to address.
The walkway? The walkway?
Parkway?
Trail.
Trail. Well, and, yeah, I don't appreciate the fact that the kids have to walk through, I guess, some muddy sections, maybe through here, but all I can offer to that problem is that, quagmire, pardon the pun, is that this will go in, I believe the timing of this phase is tied to our Phase 1, I'm not sure the trade-off there, the timing of that, but that was, that's what I recall, but an asphalt path, and I'll try not to take offense at some of the comments made, because, you know, they have their perspective on, you know, what developers commit to. I think the city, I'll rest on our reputation otherwise, and that we've never walked from a bond in your city, we've developed here for 40 years, and all I can say is that we've done everything we've told the city that we would do, we've never told anyone, nor could we legally improve this with an asphalt path or anything. So that's outside of our control, and we're excited for this last piece to go in, and the kids won't be walking through a muddy field, it will be an asphalt path.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, well, let's bring you back to the Planning Commission, for any questions for staff or deliberation on ourselves. Let's see, I think Commissioner Green.
Oh, I think he did.
Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Sokowski. Do you want to rock, paper, scissors?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Green.
Okay, so on the parking, I'm looking at the parking schedule, I want to make sure that I'm reading this right, and understand the city ordinance. So the way I understand it, there's on the 67-unit A's, the three-bedroom, two-car garage, it's required 2.5 parking spaces per unit, so there's going to be 168 spaces in there. Those 168 spaces are spread out between 134 in garages and 34 in private stalls, that's the way I read that. So there will be 168 parking spots for the 67 units, in the 31-unit Bs, the way I read that, do I read that, that it's required to have 64 spaces? 62 are going to be in garage, most of those are going to be the tandem, the back-to-back, and then because there's 98 units, there has to be one guest per four units, so that's 24 guest stalls, then there's going to be another 16 45-degree parking stalls, and an additional 65, is that what I read? So when I total those all up, I'm getting 338 parking spaces. Does that sound about right? Is my math off? I know I graduated from, never mind.
254.
168, 62, 24, 16, oh, that should be 65. I just want to make sure that we have that on the record. So we have 168, 62, 24, 16, and 65. 335, is that?
On page 10 of the staff report, I detail the parking requirement, the number of units required, and the total number.
Did I miss that? Oh, yeah, the chart doesn't, which one will we, 62, 61, something's not adding up, based on the parking plan, hold on. We have 62.
62 in the two-bedroom multifamily.
But we're supposed to have 64, so there's 62 in garages and then two extras, right? Based on the parking schedule on Exhibit H.
Right.
And then there's 168, and then we had 24 guest stalls, and then this, the chart on page 10 doesn't include the 16 45-degree parking stalls or the extra 65?
Correct, that's just the total that's been provided, it doesn't include the, let me just see, it's been a while since I worked on this.
I, so the 16 I can see on the map, those are those 45-degree angulants, I'm just wondering which one of the 65 additional stalls that are on Exhibit H are. I just want to make sure we got enough, we've got the right numbers here.
I think there's just.
Is the requirement, the requirement's 254, and we're providing 335, is that? Is that, is that the number on page 10, is that the requires 254, and we're at 335?
Yeah, the total number of parking that's required.
Is 254. And then we have, but according to the parking schedule on Parking H, we've got 335.
That's available with the additional ones on the west side of the street and angle parking, yes.
Okay. So we're, so we're more than required by ordinance?
If you have on-street parking, yes, we're over.
So how much on-street parking, are we going to be able? So how much on-street parking are we going to be able to get? The numbers on parking on the H don't include on-street parking, right?
Right.
So then there, on-street parking would still be allowed under current ordinance? Because it's a typical street?
It's a typical street, winter parking wouldn't be allowed for steno piles, so it'd be a summertime activity, I think it'd be a summertime thing.
But for guest parking, we've got an extra seventy spots, plus on-street parking, is that, is that what we think we see?
Yeah.
Okay. That answers my question.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sokowski?
Um, thank you, I just wanted to point out, in Exhibit H, in our staff packet, page twenty-five, there are, along Ranches Loop Park, I see two speed bump parking tables, and then on Ranches Park Road, I see three. So, that is included in the plan, it may not be up on here.
It is.
Oh, it is, yeah, there they are, yeah.
There's one here.
So they're, they are included in the plan.
And that is what we're looking at tonight, preliminary development plan, and that is what we'd be passing in, it does include speed bumps.
Correct. Five of them there.
Just one other point of clarification that was brought up with regard to tandem parking, the tandem parking is actually in garages, it's not outside.
Right, tandem parking is inside garages, not outside.
And we, yes, thank you, just because this is being recorded, we won't be able to get that on that public record, so thank you, but we certainly want to cover that. Any other concerns from the commission, I want to make sure that we, you know, service the public well, covering parking, architecture, traffic, walkway. I would bring up again, this has gone through the design review, I mean, in terms of the architecture, and it's been unanimously approved. Commissioner Sokowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out too, that, well, architecture is a concern, we have to meet the city ordinances for architecture, which talk about building height, and a certain amount of relief from the front to the back, and depending on the zoning, specifies, for instance, in a PC zone, or a, here, P, yeah, PC zone, the garage has to be set, you know, five feet in front of the rest of the building. There are specifications that we are allowed to look at, but as far as whether we exactly like something, based on its color or view, once it passes the design review committee, as a commission, we don't really have the right talent developer, that they can do a certain type of architecture or not, because that gets us a little bit in trouble on grounds of what is art, and whether we like that or not, from a strictly legal perspective, is not relevant. Is that correct? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other deliberation by the planning commission, questions, concerns, topics?
I think I'll...
Commissioner Green?
I appreciate, I appreciate the neighbors and the HOA here. I think the history of this project, unfortunately, I mean, it goes back, it goes back to a long time ago in a galaxy far, far away, when we look at the original master plan back in nineteen ninety-nine, and the revised, revised density goes back to, what, fourteen? Is that, is that the way I read it? Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, so, I, unfortunately, I would have to say that, on the preliminary development plan, we can't do much about what the, what the previous planning commission and the previous city council have done with density, and we're only looking at the preliminary development plan to make sure that it meets the code, looking at what the, so specifically to address a couple of things, I think, as was brought up in the public hearing, parking, I mean, I understand where parking could be an issue, but given the city requirements, and given the fact that these are going to be dedicated public streets, these aren't private roads, that, given that, the fact that they're a public street, unless for some reason the city decided to make an ordinance that there was no parking on one of the, on any of the streets, which I highly doubt they would do, given that we don't have very many neighborhoods with no parking zones, the city's going to, I think we have to find that the parking is adequate, there are three-hundred-and-thirty-five parking spaces, only two-hundred-and-fifty-four required, so we have, well, we have seventy, we have two, we have three-point-something parking spots per unit, plus the on-street parking. I appreciate the neighbors' concern that, you know, maybe there's on-street parking on streets that are going to be larger, but in some respects, I think that's actually a traffic calming measure for people parking on the streets. And it would only be, it really would only be visitor parking. The HOA is probably going to enforce, you know, you can't park, the, where they park and those kind of things inside that aren't on the public street. So I think from a parking standpoint, I think that, I'm going to, for the record, say that the parking is adequate. On here, I agree with Commissioner Sokowski, that the architecture, we can't do much about the architecture, as long as it meets the PRC design developments, and I think, based on what I see with the designs, I think the designs do meet the PC, and there are traffic calming measures on the streets, so, I think, with that said, anybody? I was going to make a motion.
Great, yeah, I would concur with what Commissioner Sokowski, you said, Commissioner Green, that even in the pre-meeting, we talked about how we need to be beholden to the standards that are already set in city code, not so much, we don't have so much leeway as to whether we like or dislike something, provided it meets the standards that the city's already set, it's not in our purview to deny that. Thank you.
So I'm going to move first, based on the findings set forth in the staff report, upon the evidence and explanations received tonight, I move that the planning commission for a positive recommendation of the city council to approve preliminary site plan for Park Side to Stone Creek, located at fifty-four fifteen west seventy-eight hundred south, in a PC zoning district, with conditions one through four is listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Green, you are approving, not forwarding any recommendation.
Oh, we're approving that?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just reading the recommended motion on this.
Sorry, sorry.
So I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan for Park Side at Stone Creek, located at fifty-four fifteen west seventy-eight hundred south, with conditions one through four in the staff report.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion by Commissioner Green, and a second by Commissioner Quinney, any discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
So the second one, I move that the planning commission approve Park Side to Stone Creek preliminary development plan for the property located at fifty-four fifteen west seventy-eight hundred south, in a PC zoning district.
Second.
Again, a motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Quinney, any discussions to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero.
And last but not least, based on the positive findings set forth in the staff report, the information received tonight, I move that the planning commission approve the Park Side at Stone Creek, Clay Hollow DE and F preliminary subdivision for the property located at fifty-four fifteen west seventy-eight hundred south, in a PC zoning district with conditions one and two is listed in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Quinney, any discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero. That concludes our agenda for the city union, we appreciate the public who have come out and definitely influenced the discussion this evening, thank you very much. And, Mr. Langford, you have some information that you would like to present in a public forum regarding two thousand and sixteen year-end update for cap and grade?
Indeed, thank you, I'll just take a couple minutes. When this cap and grade ordinance was adopted, a couple years ago, there was provision, again, let me just, as far as record goes, this is ordinance sixteen dash fifteen, and you can find it in our city code in thirteen dash eight twenty, dash twenty-three. There's a provision in that ordinance that says that each year in January, the city shall publicly announce the number of multifamily housing units that are available to be constructed based on the ratio set forth in the ordinance. So, based on that, that is a bit of a refreshment for the record, the ordinance puts a cap on a number of multifamily units allowed in the city. The ratio is twenty-three percent multifamily, and seventy-seven percent single-family residential. That's, that's the target that we're shooting for. So based on twenty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-nine single-family residential homes in the city, and also in regards to existing multifamily units, which were just over eight thousand multifamily units, we've got a total of thirty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-five living units in West Jordan. So, as we're calculating the numbers, there are now three thousand remaining multifamily units that were approved prior to this ordinance becoming effective, and they're grandfathered in, they're in the pipeline, and they're coming this direction, so, we factored all of those numbers together, and based on the number of single-family permits that we've processed this past year, which is three hundred and forty-six, it'll take approximately thirty-three years for us to reach the desired ratio stated in the ordinance. And, so we've got a fair amount of time between now and then. We, there are certainly exceptions, though, that I want to just call attention to, that the cap and grade ordinance does grant exceptions for additional multifamily units, if they're located in a transit-oriented development, or if they're a part of a federal tax credit housing project, or housing for disabled people, or housing for senior residents, that's fifty-five and older. So, and then, and then the last exception that was approved by the council this past May, was for master plan communities over seventy-five acres in size, and there's a specific ratio that you have to abide by in those master plans. So, with that, we anticipate this coming year, a large number of those existing three thousand multifamily units to come to the commission. Lots have already actually been reviewed and approved, we've got the Buick fifty-six hundred west, we've got the Jordan Valley Transit Station, we've got the Gardner Village, Garden Mill Development, so all of those, we anticipate will hold building permits this year. You've already reviewed that, councils already reviewed those. We have a couple large master plan communities, though, that will have some multifamily, and you'll get the chance to see those coming up, so, are there any questions? I bounced around with some of those numbers, but I did provide a printout of the data, if you will, so.
Thank you, Mr. Langford, Commissioner Sokowski?
Just one quick one, so essentially what that does is it makes it so that if we keep the current cap and grade in place, then it makes it so, for the next thirty-three years, essentially, no one can come in to the city and say, I want to do a multifamily development.
Correct, unless, unless it's by all of the exceptions.
Which, really, in my understanding, is going to take a lot longer than that, because there are all these exceptions, it's kind of like paying off the credit card bill that's accruing interest.
Right, yeah.
More money added to it, so, we need a lot of multi, or a lot of single-family dwellings.
So, do the exempt senior family homes count against the cap and grade? The exempt multifamily homes, like the seniors and the low income federal tax credits, TSOD, do they count against the percentage in the cap and grade?
They, pull up the ordinance here.
I was just...
They, yes, they do, yep.
Yeah, they're exempt from the moratorium, but they still...
But it's still counted.
They still, ended the final percentage. Yeah, Commissioner Pat is correct. Certainly.
We'll never catch up. So, question, to meet this, to meet the requirements of the ordinance, do we need to make a motion to say that's been officially published or anything?
No.
This is a public, because I think this has been...
Yeah, I mean, it's on the minutes, it's on the record.
I just wondered if we needed to make a formal motion to...
No, there's nothing, nothing in the ordinance that says how to officially adopt or anything like that, it's just information only.
Right, and where consists and is obtaining this information, if they wanted to, is it on the website or what's...
We, well, we're in the process of reworking RC's website right now, so I don't know how easily it is to post that, Julie could probably answer that better than I do.
Could we just incorporate that into the minutes?
You can always attach something to the minutes, and in this case, where it's relatively short, I think it's a great idea to just reference it briefly in the minutes, and just attach all three pages, that's great.
I think that, if we can do that, Julie, I think that's going to be the easiest, is just attach it to the minutes, and then it's out there.
I agree, the more transparency we can have with the public we represent, that's great, does anybody have a problem with that? Great, well, let's just conclude that with the minutes as an attachment. Wonderful, thank you.
One more thing.
Yes?
Just like, our police officers, back, I know you guys sit back there every time, and you're probably bored out of your mind, I would be, but, thank you for being here and keeping us safe, and, yeah, just appreciate it.
I'm going to move that we adjourn.
Great, any objection to that motion?
Nope.
We stand adjourned until Tuesday, February eighth of seven? I think, I think three's kind of excessive, I mean.